I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a Gadsden City Council meeting. Would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise your Father, we just thank you for yet another day. Thank you for allowing us to be here today to carry out the business of the city. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for this council and every staff person here at City Hall. We think that your word tells us the plans more likely to succeed wherever there's a multitude of council. So we even submit this meeting this morning into your hand. Thank you for the minute blessing that you've bestowed upon us to give you glory for the remainder of this day. We thank you for it now. In Jesus' mighty name we pray in all that agrees, said amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to remind all the council members and Mayor Ford, you have a button on the front of your microphone. If you press it and it turns green, that means your microphone is turned on. Item number five, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational work session on November 6th and the organizational city council meeting held on November the 7th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item number six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 4th through the 10th. So moved. Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If I may point of order, this is much for the public as it is my colleagues up here, but when you say us approve the payment of accounts each week, we receive a detailed list of all the payments from the city each week via email and have an opportunity to review all those prior to the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven is proclamations. Mayor, do you have any proclamations today? No, sir. Seeing there are none, we'll go to item number eight. Unfinished business. The first is an amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It reflects receipt of a Department of Homeland Security grant for the community emergency response teams program and appropriates the money to the correct expenditure accounts. The amount is $17,624. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Or do we vote first? We can discuss.
You are absolutely correct. Discussion comes next.
You might have any discussion on that. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Next is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 411 Van Cortlandt Street in District 6. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on September 27th. There is a recommendation from the building official to table the resolution an additional 30 days. What is the pleasure of the council?
I don't have any objections. I saw the property this morning.
Okay.
So unless there's a reason to table.
Ms. Harbison, would you care to elaborate?
There has been a little work done, but Councilwoman, this is your district, and if you want us to proceed with it, you asked for you.
I did.
Okay. Then you passed the resolution, we'll abate it. Thank you.
I guess there needs to be a second.
I'd just make a motion, yeah, move to abate the property, and then there needs to be a second.
I'll second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Number nine is new business. I don't believe there is any new business. Item number 10, reports from departments, committees, or boards. I think there has been a request for two departments from the EMA. Mr. Tanner, would you come and speak to the, is it the warming stations? Correct.
Been a request from the council just to elaborate some on the warming stations with the inclement weather coming.
Sure. So again, my name is Josh Tanner. I'm the Deputy Director for the Emergency Management Agency. This week in the state of Alabama is Winter Weather Awareness Week, so we wanted to promote preparedness for that, and as part of that, we wanted to remind everybody about the three Ps: people, pets, and pipes. Check those three things. If you have an elderly neighbor, be sure to check in on them. If you've got pets that are outside, bring them indoors and make sure that your pipes are wrapped so they won't burst in the cold. Speaking specifically about the warming shelters or the warming centers, we have a cold weather guidance tree that we use to determine when those warming shelters or warming centers are going to be opened. And the two things that we look at are the temperature, which is pretty easily understood. That's how, you know, how the temperature feels outside, and then what the wind chill factor is. If you spend any time out Saturday night, early Sunday morning, you know how bad the winds were. And that would change dramatically what the temperature really feels like, how it really feels to you. So with our projected temperature going to be less than 32 degrees for greater than 24 hours, we will be opening up a couple of warming centers based on that guidance. All Gadsden Public Library locations are open during normal business hours as daytime warming shelters or warming centers. And then we also, as far as for overnight shelters, we only have one overnight shelter in the city with that being the Salvation Army. And it opens up as far as a shelter at 6:00 PM in the evening, and then they're able to get a hot meal for supper, hot meal for breakfast. Now, during the cold snap last year, we had a partnership with the Freedom Center through Pastor Word and his congregation. They opened up the Freedom Center. Red Cross brought in cots, so they were able to make it a shelter, overnight shelter as well. The one issue, the one challenge that we have when it comes to overnights is finding people who are willing to stay overnight because we have to make sure that the facilities are being monitored, that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and we don't have any issues. We only had a few minor issues last year using the Freedom Center, and one of those was drug-related, and the other was due to a mental disorder that somebody had. So in speaking with Councilman Avery, one thing that he was wanting me to take back to the Director, Director Gaither, was possibly using Carver Community Center as a shelter. Would you like to speak to that, sir? And I'll follow up what our plan would be to do something like that.
Yes, sir. Just briefly, the facility is a nice-sized facility, and it also is unique in its way of having a separate male and female locker room that includes showers. So in this moment of housing those that are in need of shelter and a place of warmth in this season, it also gives them ability to, for a temporary time, utilize for holding items and safely showering, separate, of course, so that we won't have a unisex environment when it comes to those private moments. And so it's just a discussion, maybe that we'll mix in the mayor with this in that office. Director Gaither and Parks and Recreation also, I'm sure, will be included. But the facility is too spacious of a facility to not use in this time of need. I think Councilman Back mentioned earlier that this is the warmest day, I think, that we're going to see of this week possibly. And so we are a city that know we have a great need concerning our homeless and those that need somewhere, somewhere safe and warm. And so this is also a cry-out to all volunteers, anyone, anyone, church facilities, organizations, anyone that has a desire heart as well as time to assist with this. This is a great need in our community, and I think this would show also a great step moving forward in our city of champions of how we champion also in helping those that are in need. Thank you so much.
And one thing that I will add is, the city's in a great position because we have a partnership with the organization, voluntary organizations active in disasters. It's called VOAD, and it happens to be headed up by Craig Scott, who is the librarian for the City of Gadsden. And we're able to really partner well together. He has over 200 volunteer contacts that he can reach out to whenever we need volunteers, we need meals prepared, that type of thing. And it really works well that the EMA is able to work with the VOAD organization in such a good way for the benefit of those that need somewhere warm to go.
That's good to know. I was thinking about Craig when you mentioned that, and Mayor, I might make a suggestion. I mean, here we are, it's late 30. I mean, it's going to be cold all week, so, you know, this council would look to your office to organize, maybe with your staff, to maybe have a meeting to address that. That's something that goes a little deeper than what we can do here. Obviously, there's staffing issues, there's probably liability issues through the legal department and things like that, but maybe a, maybe a meeting sooner rather than later could be accomplished. That way, we can kind of address this and come to some kind of a conclusion, if that would be, that'd be possible. You're welcome to speak if you want to now or whatever.
We noted, and we'll make it happen.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Councilman Avery, for bringing that up. Thank you, if that's all you have, Mr. Tanner. Chief Reed, I believe you were going to address similar, we'll see, fire, I think. You know, the cold brings on heaters and fires. You said in our pre-council, there's already been two fires in the last 24 hours?
Yes, sir, Councilman Mayor. Good to see you all again. There's actually been three structured fire calls. Two of them were working fires, and the two that were working fires were both heating-related. So it is the time of year we need to take more caution with that. The first thing I'll address is what Councilman Avery had requested about the smoke detectors. The Alabama Fire College works with all of the fire departments in the state of Alabama to provide free smoke detectors for homes in our state. We are a part of that program. You have to be a homeowner to participate in this program. We will provide a smoke detector to you free of charge. If it is a rental property, it is the owner of the rental property's responsibility to provide those smoke detectors. So we're not allowed to provide them for rental properties or any other occupancy like that. But homeowners, we can provide the smoke detectors. Also, on the subject of smoke detectors, it's important that we change the batteries in those twice a year. We generally say when we change time because a dead smoke detector battery is a dead smoke detector, and smoke will not wake you up. Smoke puts you to sleep. So if you don't have a smoke detector, you run a larger risk of passing away in the fire instead of being rescued or being able to notify the fire department.
I have a question on that. It's probably a two-fold. And Mr. Harbison, it might include you. So how does one determine who owns the home if you're going up and down the street? Or how do you place these in homes?
Well, we have a form that we fill out. We are, that the owner fills out. We don't go back and check if someone falsifies it. That's between them and God. We don't go back and say, hey, this is a renter, this is a homeowner. Our goal is to get as many smoke detectors out in there into the public as we can. But we have a form we fill out. We don't go back and check with Mr. Harbison to see, does this person rent? Does this person own?
And then, Mr. Harbison, I guess part of the inspection process that your office does, I guess they look for a smoke detector?
Right. We have a database of over 7,000 rental units in Gadsden. That also includes public housing. We don't inspect anything that the federal government or state agency inspects. If it's Section 8, for instance, and we don't get involved. We have over 4,500 privately-owned rental properties that we are responsible for inspecting. And part of that inspection process is the location of smoke detectors in every sleeping room, and then outside in the general area of those sleeping rooms as well. Depending on the year of construction, they may be wired, may be battery-operated. Most of what we see because of the age of the homes that are involved is battery-operated units. Those do have to be in place. We do not check those, and there you get into some private contracts between the landlord and the tenant who's responsible for replacing the batteries or whatever. And I don't think the fire department goes in to verify.
Not in.
Yeah. So it's one of those things where, you know, you're burning okra and the smoke detector goes off. If that happens a couple of times, folks take those batteries out. And unfortunately, we've seen that that can lead to disaster. But to answer your question, those are required. And whether that be owner-occupied or rental property, if we're involved in the inspection, even for new homes, those smoke detectors or CO2 detectors, carbon monoxide, they are required in the dwelling unit, required certain places, and so we do ensure that those are in place.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Avery, is that give you information that helpful?
Yes.
Well, I have called, and I have our Fire Marshal, Jason Talton, here. He can speak to you on the space heater issue with it getting cold and the dangers of space heaters.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, citizens. Just like you said, he said just a minute ago, starting out, we've had three fires in 24 hours. We're hitting that season. Seems like God said, I hope you enjoyed fall, it's time for winter, and here we are. But with that, of the three fires, two documented were caused by heaters. It's one of the biggest issues we have in this city when it comes to fires is space heaters or heaters in general. Normally, it's the misuse of heaters. So quickly, I want to say two, three things on the use of heaters. Number one, never, 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 I'll iterate, never use an extension cord for a space heater. That's probably our number one issue, overloading extension cords with space heaters. They pull too much power. Most extension cords cannot handle that power. So that's the number one issue. Second issue, space heaters should have a three-foot space of anything that's combustible. Don't put them up close to your beds, don't put them up close to your recliners, couches, things like that. But also, you are combustible. The clothes that you wear are combustible. You shouldn't be within three foot. And I'll say it, and everybody gets mad, that's okay. I'm the Fire Marshal, I'm used to it. Space heaters under your office desk is very dangerous. You have the desk that's combustible, and you have you that's combustible. And it's almost impossible to get that three-foot area. So be very, very careful with the use of space heaters. And the last one is one that's, it's kind of hard to really push, but it's something that I like to iterate. Only use space heaters that are UL-listed. UL-listed is a little sticker. It's usually on the heater itself, and it's also on the box, packaging of the box when you buy them. UL-listed means that, one, it will have the trip hazard sensor in the bottom of it so that if it falls over, it cuts off. It'll also have an overheating protected sensor in it, so if it gets too hot, it'll automatically cut off. If it's a non UL-listed heater, it does not have those two features most likely. So when you buy your space heater, or if you have one now, check it, see if it is a UL-listed heater. And if not, go get you another one. They're not that expensive, and you can buy some really good UL-listed space heaters for not much money at any of your local stores. So that's our three issues that we really key in on. No extension cords, keep a three-foot area, and make sure it's UL-listed. Space heaters are very dangerous. It's an issue that we fight dramatically, especially this time of year, so keep it safe. Any questions?
I have any questions? Well, thank you so much. That's good information.
Thank you.
Request, Mayor, and your staff, Public Affairs and others, if we could get on a public, a PSA, if you will, to maybe get that out into the public just as quickly as possible, maybe that would be helpful in focus, maybe in areas that we know where that's an issue, like where those fires have occurred, but all over the city, obviously. All right. We have number 11 is citizen request. Like to invite Craig Scott and Darlene Harkrow. They're representing Community Thanksgiving. And tell us about that, please.
Mr. President, Mayor, and Council, very pleased to be able to talk to you about Community Thanksgiving. This is our 23rd, and something for all of you to be very proud of. Community Thanksgiving here in Gadsden is the largest Thanksgiving meal in the state of Alabama. We also believe that we are top five in the country, and it's a major event. Many of you have been involved. Darlene, I'll let you tell a little history.
Most of you know the history, but first off, let me say congratulations to all of you new councilmen and mayor. Thank you very much. I just want to say, Community Thanksgiving has been such a huge part of this community, and it has grown exponentially. We cannot have this event without citizens and people, leaders like y'all, because this is what helps, it feeds our community. I really encourage you to come and attend if there's any way possible at some point this week, because you will see a moving machine that is one big family like a grandmama's house. So I really want to encourage you to attend if you can. As far as the history, it started off at New Liberty Tabernacle with Pastor Joe Simmons. It outgrew, and then 2005, the year that Hurricane Katrina hit, they approached United Way. So United Way took it up until two years ago. Last year, Community Thanksgiving had become so big that, and there was some changes at United Way, they were like, we need you to handle this. So we became our own entity, our own 501(c)(3) entity. So we are now, we've grown up, we have our, the world of, wow, this is not doing it with United Way. So there's a lot of things that we're still learning, a lot of bugs we're still working out as far as with being in that new one. But I promise you, our heart is what is about Community Thanksgiving, and about reaching this county so that people walk off knowing they've had a hot meal, they've had somebody to pray for them or to love unto them, rather than being by themselves. Any walk of life can come and attend Community Thanksgiving. So again, it's an awesome event. Again, we thank y'all for all your participation. We couldn't do it without you. And just want to say again, thank you so very much and congratulations. We fed 8,764 people last year. That's how many meals went out, so.
Do you have a pickup and a delivery? Is that right?
We have pickup that starts at 10 o'clock. Delivery starts going out about 9:30. So we also have a Facebook page now, yay, C-O-M-M-T-H-A-N-K-S.org, where you can sign up to volunteer as well as to get a plate delivered to your home. So yes. I think last year, our dine-ins was about 1,500, and the rest was delivery and to-go. So it was, it was pretty large on that area.
I'm sure there's a lot of churches that have shut-ins and elderly that maybe can't get out, and they come and I guess pick up large amounts, 10, 20?
We had about four churches last year that actually came and got like 200 plates plus that took them out. And so, and we have some of the churches who are not just doing their churches, but they're also doing to the Housing Authority, and they're going into those communities. And so we are working right now on transportation to try, some of those folks want to come and eat with us, and so we're right now working on transportation to get, make that happen so that if they want to come to the venue, they can do that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Anybody have any comments or anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
What a wonderful gift that you give to the community.
It's only by God I can do that. Thank y'all.
All right. Item number 12 is remarks by Mayor and Council. Mayor Ford, we will begin with you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. First of all, it's been a very busy first week, and we've hit the ground sprinting, I would say. I want to thank our staff, Brett Johnson, who's here. Brett, raise your hand. He's in the office now, and then Melissa, she's man in the, or I guess man in the office is okay to say, up in the mayor's office. But, and then we have John Moore, who's not on yet, but he's coming January 2nd. Just so you'll know, this Friday, we have two new additions coming, thanks to the council for proving the resolution. Ms. Ruth Moffett will be here starting Friday, and so will Ms. Tina King. So we look forward to that. Just to give y'all an update, because we want to be fully transparent with everybody about what we've been doing and what's going on, we were actually looking for a busier this week than the first week, so we're excited about it. We sold the property for the Cancer Treatment Center and delivered the check to the Finance Department, it's approximately $600,000. Ms. Iva, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but I asked Ms. Ross about, you know, where the money goes. She explained to me, which was important, the money goes into an account, which if we ever want to purchase land in the future, that's where the money comes from. The other one was the Mayor's Action Team on Animal Control. That's something that we've had to address. It's been very important to a lot of neighbors, a lot of your communities and council districts. We chaired that committee with Ms. Gina Hollingsworth, who's an animal activist, and she included a lot of people that y'all have recommended and people that have had past experience in that endeavor. So they are supposed to report back to us within 30 days. They've had some productive conversations with the Humane Society already to this date. I want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for bringing the Kansas City Barbecue World Invitational. That was phenomenal. And if you didn't go, you missed a treat. I'm telling you, it was something else. We've been fielding, I wanted to let y'all know something that's happening, it's happening fast, and we hope to get on it, and Councilman Wilson can help me with this, but we've been fielding dozen of calls about the medical cannabis facilities. That's something that y'all passed as a resolution, and, or the previous council did, I think, and it's something that we want to make a priority. It's a law that was passed by the governor and the legislature, and now they're allowing so many places in our area in the state of Alabama. We are a targeted area due to our demographics. We want to take advantage of this. It's licensed, it's protected, it's all, everything's above board. So I'd like for us to be on the forefront of this, and Councilman Wilson, we put together a committee. We had people fielding calls, David Hooks, Lisa Osborn, John Moore, the mayor's office, Jason Wilson, everybody. So we just finally said, let's just get everybody together, have a meeting, and we did this morning. It was very productive. And what we're doing is getting all our ducks in a row. And this afternoon, Councilman Wilson, I think, has taken around some group to look at some facilities. So it's very exciting, but we got to, we got to hurry, because I got to have, the dates are coming in by the end of the year. So this is moving fast. So on the warming centers, Councilman Avery, we've been texting back and forth. We're going to utilize something called Channel 99 that we've had. We're going to try to advertise that more to the citizens of the community, and we're going to have public service announcement on it, but also we're going to have a lot of interviews on there. We're going to do live interviews with council members and also the department heads, and so we can hopefully make Channel 99 a little more active than what it is. I can't thank the department heads enough for what they've done. It's been fantastic, meeting with everybody. I'm not that much on meetings. I like getting out, going to see the people, so hopefully that will come. But in the meantime, I can't thank the employees enough for what they've done, and the police and fire for what they've done. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Appreciate the energy and the leadership that you and your team have brought to the city. It's exciting to see and watch, and the new faces and some of the old faces are certainly welcomed, and we're excited to kick this fiscal year off. Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you, Council President Back, and to the mayor, and to the council, and to all who's present today. I do, good morning to everyone. I want to just rewind and say something that I wanted to say on last week to share from my heart. I believe if you start right, you end right. So I do want to recognize and pay homage to Councilmen start right, you end right. So, I do want to recognize and pay homage to Councilman Toad for District One, and say thank you to her for all of her service for the past eight years. And we look forward to sharing with her on some things that we need to or may need to. But I really wanted to go back and do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Councilman Smith.
Good morning, everybody. I didn't get a chance to do this on last week, so I want to do it now. I want to say thank you, first of all, to the council, to Mayor Ford, to all the veterans. I want to tell you thank you for your service. Those at City Hall, those who are watching us live right now. It speaks volumes. They have a mayor who's still serving our country now. And so, for all that you do, all your hard work, we just want to say that we appreciate you. And thank you to all the department heads that came out this morning to introduce yourselves, the ones that we didn't know, and give us a warm and fuzzy. So, thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll piggyback off Councilman Smith. Thanks to all the veterans that are serving, still serving, for your dedication to our country. Thank you to the EMA department for that, that update and education and information on those warming centers. I take it very seriously on those that do not have a place to go on a daily basis that they call home. And so, therefore, I want to be one of those persons that be unique in providing and a solution to the problem that has been a problem for quite some time. Not that I have the best solutions or anything of that nature, but I want to be dealing in helping to find that solution, okay? So, I hope that we will be able to work well together in, in doing so. Also, to the citizens, be mindful to your neighbors, to friends, or to those that you're riding along the highways and streets and seeing someone. Just give out that information of where those warming centers are. That'll be helpful to all of the church organizations and volunteer organizations, if you will mind doing the same thing, so that we can get some people. I'm a late night person, so I was out late as I came in. And so, I did see a few people that were strangling, straggling around the, on the streets. And so, of course, I'm, I've, I'm in one of those unique neighborhoods, so I get out and mingle with the people and feed them and so forth. And so, therefore, I was able to get in, to get them a room for the night. And so, nevertheless, so we look forward into increasing our facilities for warmth and for, for this season. Thank you, Chief Reed and Fire Marshal, for that, that information. It came to my heart a few months ago, while I was writing and had some time to think and saw across the news feed where a couple had passed in a fire, and I believe it, it was in District 3. And so, it brought upon a opportunity to get some information out to the public to where they will be able to do a, I guess, for lack of terms, a workshop. For one session was for the businesses, the other was for the community. So, on my page on Facebook, I'm going to reshare that workshop, because I think that same information that you all gave today would be the same information that you gave then, that will be helpful for the community, if I remember that correctly. And so, also, if the citizens will continue to play this and share this on Facebook so that other people can get this information out concerning the smoke detectors, that, that information that they, that was given is very important. Space heaters and those power strips, not overflowing that with, that can cause those fires. Thank you, Craig Scott, and the team of the Community Thanksgiving. I'm looking forward to it. Again, I had my first opportunity last year. It was quite an experience to see how many people get fed, the dedication of those volunteer workers. And as a person that has been in volunteering organization, 501(c)(3) organizations for quite some time, you don't get the recognition that you should get for the most part. And that's okay, because the deal is, is that you know why you do what you do. And that's the beauty of doing what you do. And most of us, most of those that work in those. But I do want to highlight the importance of that, in that we can spread that word so everyone that is in need of a meal can get a meal. And, and hope that also those that are interested in volunteering, and I will probably make this announcement every week for you all, because I believe volunteering is one of the key of life success. I think God has equipped us for many reasons to do a life service, and volunteering is one of those things sometimes we want to do and don't want to do. In my closing remarks, I want to give a big shout out to the Gadsden City football team for their hard effort and work for this football season. They did a tremendous job. They was defeated this past Friday, but I don't think that it's over. I think next year, we're going to see a bigger, better, and better football team. And I'm just going to speak on football, because that's all I can think of right now, is football. And so, I want to let those young people know that you did a great job, and that we're looking forward to you working hard on this offseason, and coming back and, and making a part of that name, City of Champions. We're looking for that championship ring at Gadsden City School next year. Thank Coach Ali Smith and his staff, and all of those that are behind the scene and unnamed. I'm going to name one person, and that's Tamika Franklin, I believe that is her name, who makes sure that that football team get fed before every game. And she has a volunteer crew, and I think that'd be a good crew to introduce to you all, Craig, also. And they are some dedicated women, mostly women, and there are some male that's involved in that. And they make sure those young men get fed, that staff get fed, before they go off and play a game, and they do a great job. So, I do want to, again, thanks to Gadsden City High School football players, their staff, and all of those that have a part to play in their success of this 2022 season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, just to fill in the blanks a little bit on what the mayor said, with the medical cannabis efforts of the city, we've got a few different organizations that have reached out. And one of them, you know, we hear a lot about dispensaries in the medical cannabis world, which are essentially function as pharmacies. But there's also a production side to this, and that's really where the industrial recruitment aspect's coming in. These are, the estimates that we've got from the contacts we're working with is anywhere between $300 million a year in revenue annually from one of these integrated production facilities. It'll create about 125 jobs is what they estimate. And obviously, all this is preliminary. But the sense of urgency here is, believe it or not, Gadsden has to be very strategic with the industrial property that we still have here. And this could be a great way to lock in a long-term industry that we've been focused on as far as food production, healthcare, medical operations. All that kind of falls into this medical cannabis thing. So, that's the reason there's such a sense of urgency, and there's a very small timeline to do this. The, as the mayor said, they all have to have their licenses in by December the 31st. And then, the committee that is reviewing those licenses makes their selections in June, I think. And most of these large-scale operations are looking for property that they can have ready to go on June the 2nd to begin operations. So, we've got about six weeks to update the zoning and find suitable properties and sign agreements. So, everybody's really focusing hard on this. And hopefully, this will be the first of many big wins on the industrial recruitment side for us. So, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
Well, I appreciate our President Beck and all of the endeavors that we're going to jump into. And I just, and as I said to him this morning, I take a pledge to study that employee handbook. I know that it has been long overdue in terms of revisions, and I'm familiar with handbooks, given my background. So, I'm jumping into that, and hopefully, we won't have to table too many more months to discuss that subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, President Beck. Just wanted to say thanks to the mayor's staff and all the department heads this morning in pre-council, kind of introducing themselves and telling us a little bit about what you do. Appreciate that. And for District 7, I have reviewed, I have received a few phone calls. I think they're being nice to me right now. But I'm still learning myself on who to call and who to contact to solve these problems. Just be patient with me, and we'll get it done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's, it's been a good first meeting here in our, in our home quarters here at City Hall. One, a big thanks to everyone who was that involved with the inauguration last week. I, you know, haven't been around for a lot of those, but there had to have been 500 people there. And, and I attribute that a lot to this new council. I attributed, of course, to Mayor Ford and his team. And I think you invited quite a few folks, dignitaries. We had, what, US Congressman there, Lieutenant Governor. I'm leaving out.
Our delegation.
Yeah, the whole delegation.
Delegation. And thanks to Iva. Iva did phenomenal.
Exactly. Yeah, that's Iva and your staff, Jennifer Smith, who quietly sits there and does a lot of work every week, in and out. I know Iva would, can't do it without her, her entire team. It was, it was a big effort, and thanks to the staff at the venue. Scott Elkins and his team over there. It was just, it was an exciting day. Thank you to our, our police department that were there in masks to make sure everything went smooth. And that's, that's always very comforting. And, but it's good to get that behind us. And here, now here we are. We've got four years in front of us. I'm excited about our, our council. I'm excited about who is sitting up here on this dais. And I think that, as I said, if you can't get excited about Gadsden right now, you, you need to really check yourself. There are so many things that are happening, and it's happening so fast, sometimes it's hard to even keep up with, Mayor. So, my hat's off to you and your team. And just, it is refreshing and exciting to see the future of Gadsden. I think it's extremely bright. And with all the things like VOAD and the Community Thanksgiving, I mean, you know, and I look at Ms. Baker in the back, and we're talking about homelessness and people sitting out, you know, her, one of her job is to count the homeless. And I believe we now have double today that we had probably last year, if I remember correctly. So, there is a challenge in, in that area, and it's being addressed. Mayor's office is looking into that, and there's, there's talks being done. You just can't do everything all at once. But rest assured, those things do not go unnoticed by the city. And so, with that, if there's no more comments, we will be adjourned.